Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Lexington's Planning Commission meeting. This is our normal monthly meeting and is being held at 8:00 a.m. Wednesday, June 21st, 2017. The meeting is being broadcast live and will air several times throughout the week on the town's informational channel. I am Keith Ross, Planning Commission Chair, and I will ask the other members to please introduce themselves.
Good morning, I'm Frank Berry.
Good morning, Sammy Hendricks.
Good morning, I'm Brian Amy.
Good morning, I'm Lisa Gibson.
Good morning, I'm Jeannie Michaels.
Good morning, Roscoe Kaufman.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Stuart Ford.
Good morning, Ron Williams, Town Council.
Good morning, I'm Brad Cunningham, Town Attorney.
Good morning, Dan Walker, Director of Parsons Sanitation.
Good morning, Randy Edwards Transportation.
Good morning, John Hanson, Director of Planning.
At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Gibson if she will lead us into vacation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of this new day. We thank you for the rain. Lord, we just ask that you will give us wisdom and guidance in our planning for our town. I pray that you would bless those that serve and comfort those in our nation that have lost during this time. We thank you for your guidance and all you do for us in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please rise and join me in the pleasurable presence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. First item of business, any deletions to the agenda? Nothing is being removed that I am aware of. That we will move on to approval of our meeting minutes from May 17th, 2017. You received a copy of those in your packet. Do we have any questions, comments, corrections? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. All right. First item of old business is annexation of property on Zinker Road. John?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be defusing myself from this item.
All right.
As well as number two.
BNT Investments owns 41.6 acres located adjacent to 165 Zinker Road and has petitioned annexed property. Great Southern Homes is planning to construct a 105-unit subdivision on the property. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial and Zinker Road is classified as a local road. This annexation was reviewed in March and the commission recommended against annexing the property with protected residential two zoning. Item came back to the commission in April at council's request and it was deferred to allow the developer time to explore additional options related to the zoning of the adjacent properties.
All right. Any questions for John?
Question?
Yes.
Was there any action on the additional options that was asked for?
They could speak more intelligently about what negotiations they may have had with adjacent property owners. My understanding is that there was an attempt made to inquire about having those properties zoned general commercial and the adjacent property owners were not inclined to pursue that.
All right. We have someone here that maybe can talk to that? If you would please come forward and introduce yourself.
Hey, I'm Scott Morrison with Great Southern Homes. We did reach out to the neighboring, to the two neighboring property owners, one of which was Chris Ronnie with the Piedmont Building Plan, wasn't very inclined to downzone his property and the other property owner was unresponsive through two different real estate agents, that one that's working with them. We could get no response out of them. So what we've done instead on the sketch plan, which I know kind of goes into number two, but on the sketch plan, we've shown additional buffering on our own property, which I think at its greatest is about 390 feet of buffer and then 250 at its closest as far as providing some sort of transitional buffer on our own property, something we can control.
Okay. But no zoning buffer that we talked about last time of, you know, general commercial between our industrial use and our protected residential?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions of Mr. Morrison?
What are your setbacks on this for the driveways?
Yeah, that's item two, which we're going to take up on.
Sorry, I started on, that's my fault. I started talking about it in real.
Okay. I'll ask you in a minute.
At this point, we're looking at just the...
Do you need to go to the gentleman?
No, no. I think we need to address one. I mean, we're going to address both of them either way, I believe. So, I mean, we've sent this back and asked for some additional work and review and I think at this point, we at least need to have the discussion and we'll figure out where it goes from there. Yeah, and I'll be honest, I mean, we've spent some time last month talking about this and a little bit this morning and part of what a planning commission is supposed to do is to plan. And, you know, we have, we've established zoning criteria, we've established uses and part of planning and establishing appropriate zoning is to prevent incompatible uses. And that was the concern that we expressed last month is, you know, placing residential directly adjacent to industrial is FOPA number one in the planning world. I mean, it just, it creates issues and we talked a little bit about, you know, I see it every day in my real job where we have folks next door to asphalt plants or concrete plants that want to start up at 2:00 in the morning during the summer to do projects and it just creates all kind of unhappiness. So, I really think, you know, from my perspective here, not that, again, your project is a bad product or even the location is a bad location, I just think without that protection and that proper zoning buffers, that this is a difficult one for me to support.
So, buffers that we control on our own property don't...
No, sir, because, you know, again, you're, in the back corner, you're 300 feet, you know, while you control that 300 feet, you know, once you step across that property line and that property I think is up for sale, you don't know what's going to go there. And 300 feet is not a whole lot of buffer when it comes to an industrial activity making a lot of noise at night in a residential home where people are trying to sleep. So, again, I think those are, and again, we're not just looking, again, here at this project either. I mean, part of what we talked about is, you know, this area is primed for development. There's a lot of undeveloped land within two or three miles of here. And so, you know, we have to look at what's the precedent, what are the things that we're going to require of each development? You know, and, you know, I think one of the things that we've talked about a lot is, one of the standards we're going to expect is that downgrading of zoning as we get closer to the PR2 or PR1 residential development. So, you know, in this area, we don't intend to stack residential directly up against industrial. And unfortunately, you're the first person here, I understand that, but I think it's only beneficial for us to make that clear so that you and anybody else that comes back with additional developments understands that this is what the expectation is going to be. I think it's unfair to place restrictions on certain folks that others don't have to comply with. So, yeah, I think that's my thought. Again, I know the commission members have their own thoughts and ideas and, but I just wanted to give you that's a concern for me still that we have the industrial directly Any other questions from Mr. Morrison or John on the annexation and the zoning? No further discussion? Do we have a motion? And at this point, we're making a recommendation to council.
Motion to recommend staying zoned industrial?
All right.
To deny the PR?
All right. So the recommendation would be to not rezone the property to protected residential? And, correct, John? Or I guess, it's an annexation?
I think you should reaffirm your previous recommendation, which was not to zone the property with PR2 zoning.
Okay, yes. Not to recommend annexation with the zoning of PR2.
If that's the direction you want to go, that is...
Does that sound, okay. All right. We have a motion. All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Let's go seconds. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? All right. That's it. All right. And again, that's a recommendation to council. At this point, they'll need to take that up. I do want to, I guess, still discuss item two, John? I think it's appropriate.
If that's your prerogative.
I mean, I think it's worth, I mean, as this moves forward, again, at this point, we've made a recommendation. I think we should at least have some discussion of the sketch plan so that, you know, if we have comments, questions, concerns on that, those maybe either can be addressed or at least council will be aware of what our thoughts are.
Certainly would be appropriate if you want to pursue that.
All right. Want to move to item two?
Okay. Great Southern Homes is requesting sketch plan approval for a single-family subdivision being planned adjacent to 165 with 105 lots on 41.6 acres. The allowable density of residential development is determined by the classification of the street that provides access to the property. Zinker is classified as a local road, which allows six units per acre in cluster developments. The proposed development will have approximately two and a half units per acre. Properties with PR2 zoning do not have a minimum lot size as long as the homes being constructed can meet the minimum setbacks and driveway requirements. This subdivision has a minimum lot area of 7779 square feet. The average lot area is 8,670 square feet and the maximum lot area is 19,838 square feet. The minimum lot area on this project exceeds the minimum required for a PR1 subdivision, but the requested setbacks require the project to be submitted as a cluster development with PR2 zoning. The developer is proposing a 20-foot front yard setback and a 10-foot secondary setback for corner lots. The proposed rear yard setback is 10 feet and the proposed side yard setbacks are 5 feet. The town's land development ordinance requires at least 20% of the area to be open space with at least 50% of the open space being active recreation space with tennis courts, swimming pools, or other approved amenities. The amount of open space provided meets the requirement of the ordinance with 11.8 acres. To meet the active open space requirement, the plan includes two and a quarter acre park/picnic area in common area four and a mulched walking trail along the wetlands areas. No additional information has been provided about the features that will be added to the picnic park area. Access to the development will be obtained through a single entrance off of Zinker Road. A traffic study was completed for the project. Study recommended no changes to the road system in the area. A review of the project yielded questions about whether the proposed open space amenities meet the active open space requirement in the ordinance. Additionally, concerns were raised with the project's location adjacent to industrial properties and how these uses may conflict as well as discussions we had with the traffic plans.
Okay. Well, and that's, we got to talk about that. Mr. Morrison, if you'd come forward, I think, you know, well, I think we started on a little while ago and I think there's some question and one that I've heard a couple of times since while John was talking is, where's open space for, where you're talking about the picnic area on your sketch plan?
Back or...
Is that the very back corner?
The wetland buffer?
No, it's in the yellow. It's in the buffer that he identified earlier as his transitional buffer, but is that back left corner near the properties for sale?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess, John kind of touched on it and teed it off a little bit in his discussion. What are you planning on putting there other than a picnic table? It seems like most of the uses are just kind of passive open space uses where it seems like the ordinance intended for it to be, you know, tennis courts, swimming pools, other active amenities.
How's walking not active?
Well, I don't think that's what was envisioned in our ordinance when we talked about, you know, active space, walking trails. I think that's been a, I think in years, I think that's seems to become a pattern, but I'm not so sure that's what was envisioned and what's intended by an active space.
We're open to suggestions, but swimming pools and tennis courts were not intended. Typically, those, the cost of those on a development of this size make your HOIFEs way too high for 100 homes. You know, as you get to 150, 200, I mean, you know, you can start to afford those things.
Okay. I mean, I think we have subdivisions of comparable size in town now that have active space with pools and other things. All right. I think we had some other questions earlier. Jeannie, if you want to...
I see where it says what the setbacks were planned. If you were to make the setbacks a little farther and have the driveways be longer, what would that do to your development? Would that substantially change it as far as the number?
It costs more and it brings the streetscape further back, which is not, I mean, we like the fronts of houses being a little closer, but we don't like them closer than 20 because we can't get a parking spot outside the right of way.
Well, that's what we're worried about.
At 20 feet, we can park a car outside the right of way before the house.
How many vehicles do you intend to have at each house? How many do you think normally is at a house?
Two.
Okay. So you're proposing one parking space? Where would the other car park?
We've got garages and we've got, and typically our, typically our driveways are 20 feet, which allows to...
And it's a single car garage?
Two car and one car.
Okay. I mean, I just wonder how wide the driveway, if you're going to be able to fit two or one. The concern, I think, which she's asking about is, and I guess I had the question is, you've got lot sizes that are big enough to do PR1, so you've got larger lots, but yet you're doing a 20-foot front yard and a 10-foot rear yard. So I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to adjust that, you know, to either address what we consider, I think, narrow streets if you're going to have cars parked in them or address sufficient parking in front of the house on the driveway. So I think we're trying to figure out is there a way to address those issues?
I believe 20 feet is what, you know, certainly what we've looked at as enough room to get parking outside of the right of way before the house. So that couple of garages gives us at least two and sometimes four. If it's a two-car garage and you've got 20-foot driveway in front of it, you can stack four there. Not that anyone actually uses their entire garage for...
Unfortunately, most people don't use any of their garage.
I'm fortunate enough to have one car in my two-car garage, but, you know.
Okay. All right.
What's the width of the streets?
Whatever the standard Town of Lexington or Lexington County road width would be. I believe that's 25 back-to-back.
So 25-foot back of curve?
If that's correct, whatever the county standards is, standards are.
Okay. All right. Have you guys done any projects or given any consideration to doing something perhaps a little wider than 25 feet or is that just the, you guys go with the, I guess, whatever the minimum standard is, is what you're...
Typically, we go with the standard, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. I want to, and if I could, I want to ask one question. I know you guys did a traffic impact study to determine whether or not there were any improvements needed at your entrance on Zinker, as well as I think you looked at the industrial road and the wildlife road intersections. The traffic plan seems to indicate that you're not going to have any significant impact, but it does identify as the industrial road intersection as being something that already has some concerns and issues. It does not perform really great at peak hours. What would, I guess, what would your concept or proposal be if we ask you to look at doing some improvements at that intersection since a majority of your traffic, I think, will be heading out through that direction as we move forward to try and make some improvements and not further exacerbate an already subpar intersection?
We can certainly look at that. I don't know exactly what that would entail, but...
Okay. And we talked a little bit and I think, you know, as this moves forward, should council determine that it's acceptable to move forward? And we talked a little bit with Randy Edwards and I think he's got some concepts and some ideas, some things that would help improve that. And the reason I mention this, and I know your project is small and it's not under traffic studies showing to have a significant impact, however, as we talked about earlier with planning, you know, that also goes with traffic. I mean, the one big thing we hear out of people here in town and folks outside of town is, you know, it doesn't appear that the people in Lexington have any forethought when it comes to traffic planning. And as we talked about earlier, this area is ripe for significant development. And I think we owe it to the citizens, both people that may live in this community as well as future development, to be proactive and look into the future as to what this may look like in 10 years and begin addressing some of those concerns because by the time we add four or five small neighborhoods that individually don't add any issue or any impact to the traffic, cumulatively, we've now created yet another major traffic congestion area in Lexington. And that's something that I think we want to try and avoid. So I think that's something we would, we would like to at least see you have some discussion with staff as this project moves forward. You know, we've talked about D cell lanes and, you know, coming off of industrial onto Zinker, left turn and right turn lanes out of Zinker onto industrial. I think there are some things that could be done that perhaps would aid in this process. And, you know, again, I want it to be something that's commensurate with what you're doing. I don't want to burden you with trying to fix a problem that, you know, is outside of your budget and scale, but I would like to have some discussion as this moves forward that we think there's some improvements that could be made that are reasonable, that would help as things move forward in three, four, five years.
Certainly, we can meet up with Randy and have those discussions.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on sketch plan? Questions?
Well, I'm just concerned, like I say, back to the common area, the green area of the piece of property two that's for sale in front of that, if it becomes another industrial, becomes another industrial piece and then you've got your green area there, I don't know. That is a concern to me.
And I understand that, you know, and again, this is, you know, this project is really, I think, going to either set the stage for what happens in this area or not. You know, there's significant amount of property west and north of this that is undeveloped and it's a transitional area. It can be industrial, it can be commercial, it can be residential. And again, I don't know that this is a bad project or bad location. I think we just got some zoning issues we need to work through to make sure that we're making the right decisions as we move forward. And, you know, I'll be honest, I still, we're still back to, you know, looking at your sketch plan, we're still back to the zoning issue. You know, we still have those adjacent uses that are potentially inconsistent. And I just, I think it's difficult, it's just difficult to consider this, again, encoupled with the zoning request from my perspective. But again, not that the site plan or the, you know, aside from the issues we talked about, that it's a bad plan. It's just, I think we've got some zoning issues that really need to be addressed as we move forward. Additional questions?
I was helping Jeannie. She didn't have her glasses, so...
I don't know that it helps with some of this. I don't know that it helps. I was going to read this with glasses. It's getting small.
Getting larger TV.
Getting larger TV. Maybe we can get some iPads or something so we can look at it while we're sitting here.
Zoom in.
We have talked to Councilman Williams about that.
Dollar glasses.
We'll do that. All right. Any additional questions, thoughts? All right. So we have a consideration of the sketch plan. Do we have a motion?
We didn't have an extra property.
Well, I guess, I guess it's a good question, John. We've had some discussion, I guess, do we, do we have a vote or do we just say we, without annexation or recommendation of annexation?
Brad can correct me if I'm wrong, but based on your recommendation, I think that the sketch plan has to be denied until the council has ruled on the annexation.
Okay.
But in the meantime, your discussion, I think, has given Mr. Morrison something to think about so that when that issue gets resolved, we can move forward with a...
Which was my hope. Again, I didn't want to bring this back again, potentially another month from now and then have some of this discussion and, you know, we want to be upfront and honest and kind of give you all of our feedback. And so, all right, so with that, I guess, do we need to take a motion or take a vote on that?
I think you have to.
Okay.
Move it now.
All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none of all those in favor, please raise your right hand. unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Mr. Morrison. All right.
I think we have to do that because of the timeframes that we're...
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know. It's, we've had it. All right. So I guess when we move on to item one and Frank will join us again.
It's funny how he does that on the sticky ones.
Item number one on new business.
CDG Lexington has requested site plan approval for a parcel located adjacent to 230 Salute Springs Road. This parcel was created from 0.35 acres of excess land that was acquired to install the secondary entrance to the Lexington Marketplace Shopping Center. The parcel will be accessed through this driveway, so an additional curb cut on Salute Springs will not be required. The intended use of the parcel is a 3,000-square-foot office building, but they don't have a firm project on it yet. And the general commercial zoning would allow a variety of different units to be located on the site. The primary reason we put this on your agenda was because of its proximity relationship to the larger shopping center that kind of created this parcel availability.
All right. Any, any questions, John? Discussion? All right. Do we have anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Nope. All right. Hearing no discussion, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
All right. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none of all those in favor, please raise your right hand. unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Item number two, rezoning property located on Augusta Road. John?
Wilson Shealy LLC has requested to rezone a parcel located adjacent to 4863 Augusta Road. The entire 61-acre property is currently zoned general commercial. They are asking, requesting to split zone the parcel with general commercial and protected residential two and include a planned development special overlay. The primary purpose of the overlay is to reduce the required buffer and setback between potential commercial, a potential commercial center and the residential portion of the property. Traditional zoning would require up to a 70-foot buffer and 100-foot setback between these uses. The planned development submitted for this request proposes reducing the buffer to 20 feet and the setback to 25 feet. Also, there is a change in the height ratio to, which typically is not an issue that I didn't put in my write-up. We had a discussion in the last couple of days about that being needed in there as well. The PUD proposes to, otherwise, the PUD proposes to adhere to all other traditional zoning requirements in the ordinance for any development that will be located on the site. And Mr. Chambers is here to discuss their... And Mr. Chambers is here to discuss their plans.
Okay. Any questions there, John, before we get to that? All right. Mr. Chambers, please come forward. Introduce yourself.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Patrick Chambers. I live at 1312 Hummerburg Drive in West Columbia. I'm here on behalf of Wilson Shealy's family, who, as you guys probably know, this property has had lots of proposed uses over the years. Some very intensive to very dense commercial throughout the whole property, and nothing has ever seemed to work on this piece of property. They hired us to come in and try to help them dispose of it because they need to get rid of the property. And some of our thought process was, was to create some activity here, would be to downzone a portion of it to a single-family use to help generate some traffic, and then still try to utilize and extract some of the value out of the front with the commercial uses in the future. So in doing so, we've gone to several single-family guys, and we've had some interest. So we started looking at zoning and how, how we could get out of the general commercial zoning down to a residential zoning for this piece so we could accommodate those uses. And in talking with John and looking at the zoning, we realized that there's some pretty major buffers and setbacks between the commercial and the residential, which would be essentially in the middle of this property. So it kind of, it kind of didn't make sense from a planning perspective as I was thinking through this, as this is, you know, what you kind of want is a compacted site with uses on one side as opposed to, let's eliminate a 100-foot strip in the middle of a piece of private mixed-use development. It just didn't, it didn't make sense, and it really, it really cut back from the usability of the front general commercial piece. So that's why we're here, and hopefully you guys will consider this. This is really a multi-step process. If you, if you grant approval to this and it goes through council, then we will be back, you know, at some point in the future with actual sketch plans and more definitive plans for the property. This is just really a baseline to establish some zoning so we can get plans done because it's hard to employ engineers to do plans when you don't have zoning on a piece of property. So that's, that's why we're here.
All right. Tell me again, I don't know, maybe I missed it. Your involvement with this is...
I represent the Shealy family. I'm a real estate broker.
Real estate broker, okay. All right. That's what I was kind of getting to. All right. And you touched on it right there at the end. Coming back later with the, with the site plan or sketch plan. Historically, when we've been asked to approve PUDs, we've been given the conceptual design and a plan at the same time. It makes me a little wary to give agreement to do a plan use development on a piece of property without seeing what the, what the plan's going to look like. And, you know, that, I read through your, you know, your, your write-up on the plan use and some narrative, and, you know, there's, there's a few things that concern me. One is the access to the site. I know John raised the issue of potentially getting to Dooley Road rather than everything dumping out on No. 1 Highway, which is already a, can be a miserable place to be at certain times of day. It also indicates that you're looking at using the existing full service and an existing right-in, right-out near Bojangles plus two additional full-service access. That seems excessive. I'll just be honest with you. That, you know, when we've looked at development projects on 378 Highway 1, I don't think I've seen anything in the last five years with that many access points. I just, I don't know that we haven't. Again, the fact that you're located right near a stoplight, I think the, I'm going to assume the options of you getting a signalized intersection somewhere along this property is probably going to be very difficult for the DOT.
I'm not sure about that. I mean, depending on use, I mean, if a, I don't think a grocery store ever goes there because everyone in the brothers looked at it and turned it down. But, I mean, if something like that were to go there, yeah, you certainly, certainly would meet warrants, I would think, and separation, I mean, there's substantial frontage on this property.
All right. Well, I know, I hate to hear that. I know folks on that side of town have been asking for food for store forever.
I think it's needed.
I know plenty of people that live over there that are going, we want a grocery store.
People come to town, you look at the new neighborhood market on Emmanuel Church, and they're like, yeah, that's only two miles. Although it's kind of a different area, just as the crow flies, it's relatively close. So it's things like that that limit the marketability, those types of stuff.
I just, you know, what's, what's your status, I guess, of a site plan or...
Well, let me, let me just hit on that for just one second if you don't mind. All right, so the access, very preliminary at this point. We sent a plan to DOT just, just to get their thoughts, and they came back and they moved some things around. And they said, this is, you have kind of, we'll provide you kind of options A and option B. When you get to that point, obviously, I think there will be some traffic impact analysis that needs to be done, and certainly would go through Randy's office on the way. But they basically said, you can eliminate this right-in, right-out. And then, because we had, like, we had another right-in, right-out we were looking at, and maybe another full access, and then they said, basically, if you eliminate this right-in, right-out, you can, you can move this down and move this down, dah, dah, dah. Well, it turned out that, based on the arms manual, it, it met the requirements for two additional cuts on Highway 1 if you met the certain separation requirement. So essentially, the one cut would go on, close to the far end, I mean, 100 or feet or so off the far end, and then one kind of lands in the middle, and those are spaced out. I can't, I don't have that in front of me, but 600 feet or whatever they are, they're, pretty good spacing in between them. So that was vetted through Carol Hamlin's office at SEDOT in a preliminary, very preliminary, and they sent us back sketches of where the use, where the driveway should go. I think that's really, you know, a sketch plan thing, and I hear you about, about not wanting to approve something prior to seeing an actual plan. I do think this probably may be a little different than what you might see from a big apartment and, and commercial use, you know, PUD. I think, you know, being that we're downzoning to a single-family, less intensive use on a portion of it, I think that, that certainly, I don't think it hurts, you know, the property or from a planning perspective, doesn't hurt the area, I should say.
And I agree. I mean, I think it's a, a much more attractive option than a high-density residential-type scenario. Unfortunately, though, I do think if we're looking at eliminating buffers, and, you know, I know from, from a economic perspective, you know, that 100-foot buffer in the middle of your property is, is an issue. I get that. From a planning perspective, I'm not sure buffers and separation between commercial activities and residential activities are a bad thing. We talked about that just a little while ago. So even if they're part of the same project, I think folks still deserve some of that buffering and some of that setback. And I think without seeing what those may be and how they're going to interplay, you know, what's going to be your, your development process, you know, I just think it, it leaves a lot of unanswered questions, and I don't want to, you know, I think it's just hard for me to conceptually give a PUD approval without seeing what's the concept. You know, again, granted, single-family residential, I think, is a, is a better use for the residential portion, but I still think we would like to see that. And I guess, the other question I kind of touched on a little bit, has there been any discussion about getting access to Dooley Road?
There's a creek there, it's right there. So I think from a, you know, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars now to, to get through the core to put in creek crossings. So getting to Dooley Road from where, I mean, we're certainly open to leaving an access there, so anybody ever develops one of those front pieces of property, happy, happy to connect to them and for them to connect through us, that's, that's not an issue at all. I think the ability for us to go out the back tail of this piece of property that touches Dooley Road is just, it, it's not a feasible solution given the, the conditions of the property and the Corps of Engineer approvals and things you have to go through. It's not a, it's not economically feasible to access from that direction.
What about, and I guess, you know, my thought was also, what about an access through one of the additional parcels up closer to Highway 1?
That's, that's what I mean. We have no control over those properties. I mean, I'd be happy to...
What I'm asking is, have you made an attempt to get access through those?
There's been attempts, not by me personally, there's been attempts from the property owners in the past, and to my knowledge, from, from what I've been told, and to no avail. But again, I think we're certainly happy with leaving them a nice little point of connection if and when their property ever, ever gets developed. I mean, that's just something that's out of our control.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on Mr. Chambers regarding...
My concern is the volume of traffic and the number of units. I did a quick math. If you do three to three and a half an acre, you're looking at somewhere between 100 and four, 30 to 100 feet of units. Put two cars in the driveway, just like we just talked about, that's 300 more cars coming out at a very, very congested location. I drive through a couple of times a day. People are doing U-turns in front of the, in the intersection of, right there at Dooley Road to come out of Lexington, turn around and go back to the extended stay, or they miss the exit, or whatever it may be. So without seeing some type of plan, what's planned to go here, I'm going to be inclined to, to vote against any type of rezoning.
And that's probably my thought. I thought we could have come with a sketch plan, but I thought that you guys were going to get another bite of the apple, so this was being very preliminary.
We all were fine.
Yeah. And I know the traffic is, I'm sure it makes somebody like Randy skin crawl to drive through that intersection. I mean, that, that just, that whole intersection just needs to be redone. But I mean, that's something that, I mean, we can't go build a new interchange at Highway 1.
I guess, have you done a traffic impact study to see what contribution? I mean, I think that's something that's...
See, it becomes a problem, it becomes a problem for developers, and I think Frank can speak to this, that they don't want to go spend thousands of dollars on a piece of property that's not, that doesn't even have zoning. So that, that's why we're here, to try to establish, you know, some criteria for, for what the property can be used for. So we'd say that a developer will go spend those thousands of dollars that it takes to do the planning for it.
And I, and I guess the response to that would be, and if this were, you know, if somebody were coming in to put something on it that fit, you know, I think it'd be a lot easier for us to say, yeah. But, you know, when we were asked to not only rezone a piece of property, but also start looking at, at reducing setbacks and other things and protections, you know, that, that, we just had to be a little more cautious there. And I, I agree with Frank. I think, you know, without some type of, of traffic plan and, and plan to look at for just site access and development, it's difficult to, to move forward with a positive, yeah, this is a good thing, it's time to do it. Again, I agree, it's a piece of property, it needs to be developed. It's been sitting there for a long time, and we, we looked at the first plan for this probably almost 15 years ago.
I would say easily.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's been a lot of things planned even up until the last two years. I think, I mean, in that case, from what I'm hearing from you guys, is y'all need to see more. Why don't we just, why don't we just bring back the sketch plan maybe next month, and then we'll try to, well, maybe two months. It depends on how long it takes to get the traffic studies done, and we'll just try to go from there, I mean, if we can, and just...
Withdraw.
Wait till you guys see a little bit more.
Is that withdrawal?
Yeah, we can withdraw it for now. Yeah, that's fine, and we'll just bring, we'll bring it back. I mean, I stopped, and John's, John's seen some preliminary stuff, and I think we just weren't ready because we didn't have the traffic studies and stuff done. But let's just go back to, let's just go back to the drawing board, and we'll bring it back to you.
All right. Well, thank you. I'd like to say, again, I think you've, you've kind of heard our concerns, our thoughts. I mean, as you, as you guys are working through this, this planning process, I think, hopefully that gives you some good ideas as far as what we're looking for and what we're expecting to see. And like I say, we will look forward to, to seeing the plan and hopefully moving forward and getting this property developed and used.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. All right. Next item, item three is annexation of property at 565 Corley Mill Road. John?
JZ PLLC owns 1.6 acres located at 565 Corley Mill Road and has petition to annex the property. A dentist office is located on the site. Property's in town near this one, is owned office, commercial, and protected residential. Corley Mill Road is classified as a collector road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the use of the property, the recommended zoning for this parcel is office, commercial, and the recommended classification of Corley Mill Road is a collector. You could also do a limited commercial on there because it fronts limited commerce, it fronts Corley Mill. River Bluff High School is limited commercial, but it's also right there on the corner of Mill Stream where there's some office, commercial plan with respect to that. But that was...
Yeah, I mean, that was a question I was going to ask, that little strip that's on the other side of the power line right away that we did last time as part of the PUD there on Corley Mill. Did we do limited commercial?
No, that was office.
Office commercial as well? Okay. So office commercial would be consistent. And it's general, I assume general commercial is the gas station?
Well...
Or will be at some point. I mean, it's, actually, in the county, it's general commercial.
It, it will be, hopefully, coming to you reasonably soon.
All right. All right. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
No, pretty much neither.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sammy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. All right. Item four is annexation of property at 889 South Lake Drive.
Royalty Properties LLC owns 1.9 acres located at 889 South Lake Drive and has petition to annex the property. Circle K is planning to construct a new convenience store on the site. Property's in town near this one, is owned general, commercial, and industrial. South Lake and Glassmaster Roads are both classified as arterial roads. Due to the surrounding conditions, the intended use of the property, the recommended zoning for this parcel is general, commercial, and both adjacent roads are recommended to continue their arterial road classifications.
So Glassmaster is arterial?
It is.
Wow. Interesting.
I thought so too.
I would have assumed collector. I never realized we did arterial on that. So maybe that's something we want to consider. Because either way, I think it still fits, but I just, arterial seems awful significant for a two-lane road that really dead ends down at the other end to a dirt road. So, all right. Any questions?
I know this is premature, but I'm assuming they will have an entrance on South Lake Drive?
We have not seen a site plan submitted yet.
The only reason I'm asking is I would request, even if we think about that in future going forward, that needs to be at least a right-in, right-out.
I would concur. There is a left turn lane on South Lake Drive coming south, and I think any type of access in there that would be full service would, would conflict with that left turn lane. So I think that's an appropriate thought.
I don't think necessarily, if you wanted to comment, we're just talking about annexation.
Yeah, no, we were just talking about annexation, but I think it's, when we start looking at site plan, I guess there's some...
Again, I said it was premature.
There's some things we'll look at. So, all right.
Site plan will not come back to y'all unless you specifically request it, but we will note it for our review.
Okay. Randy? If you would like to, if you would like to request that as part of, part of a motion, we'll, we'll deal with that. But I guess, first question I get, this, in the county, do you know what this is owned currently?
I do not.
Okay.
I would imagine it's ID, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. I would, I would assume so. All right. Any other questions? All right. Do we have anyone else here that's to speak to this item? Nope. All right. I think what I heard earlier was a request for this to come back to the Planning Commission when you receive a site plan for approval. Okay. All right. Do we have a, a motion on the annexation request?
Motion approved with the site plan approval back to plan plan.
All right. Do we have, do we have a, no, we're good. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So we have Sammy and Frank. I guess, and I'm, and I feel embarrassed because I shouldn't, what I would like to do is request an amendment to that, and I brought this out, I don't think it's a huge issue, but I think the, for classicifying Glassmasters and arterial road is perhaps a, is a mistake that was made long ago, and I'm not sure we could continue that. I think now's the process to start looking at, at adjusting that. So I guess what I would request is maybe if you would consider an amendment that would classify Glassmaster as a collector and South Lake as an arterial.
How's that going to affect the properties that are currently...
I don't think there's anything there that, that wouldn't go on collector. I don't think there's anything there that, that wouldn't go on collector. I mean, I think all, they're all general commercial back up through there. I do think it's, you know, there are certain things that, I mean, I just don't think it needs to be an arterial classification.
Okay. I agree. I'm assuming when you're, when you're asking that question, you're asking just for the adjacent proportion next to this parcel.
At this point.
We will address the rest of it in a later day.
Yes. At this point, it's just the, the partial we're dealing, portion we're dealing with here. So is that acceptable? Okay. All right. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Frank, sorry.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Managing unanimous, thank you very much. All right. That is all the items we have for our agenda this morning. Anything else for the good of the commission before we adjourn? Traffic still...
Next week.
Next week? Traffic maybe? All right. Anything else from the town? Brett? I reckon Brett. Stuart? Used to seeing Brett sit there.
Appreciate all of what you do for the town. Great for your hard work and call. Should put it in the process here, and I wish everybody a good summer.